The fourteenth of January, 2025.
You know what, I was on a
We're in the Tom Baker Room of the City County Building. This will be the Board of City Commissioners meeting, starting here in a few minutes. It's 5:15 on the fourteenth, but prior to starting, if we can call Chaplain Carr forward, please.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. It is with deep sorrow and heavy hearts that I share this message from the Bismarck Police Department. We share the tragic passing of Officer Clint Fuller. Officer Clint Fuller was with the Bismarck Police Department for 21 years, and he dedicated his life to serving and protecting the community. He always went above and beyond to ensure the safety and the well-being of others in this community. His commitment and kindness touched countless lives, and he will be remembered as a true hero. Officer Fuller had an immense presence in the community. He knew no enemies, and he was loved by all, all who had the pleasure of encountering him. He was known around the department for his constant smile, positive attitude, and an occasional dad joke. Our thoughts and prayers are with his family, his friends, and all who had the honor of working alongside of him. May his memory be a lasting source of inspiration, and may his loved ones find comfort during this incredible, difficult time. I ask that you please join me in a moment of silence as we remember Officer Fuller. Heavenly Father, it's at times like these that really show us what's really important in life. That being family and friendships. Father, we ask at this time that you'll be with the Fuller family. We ask that you would wrap your arms around them. We ask that you would send your Holy Spirit to them and give them a peace which surpasses all understanding. We thank you for Officer Fuller's life. We thank you for his dedication not only to the Bismarck Police Department, but to this community. It's going to be hard to replace him, so we thank you for him and his life. Now, Father, we turn our attention to this meeting. We ask that you'll be with our Commissioners and our Mayor tonight, guide and direct them. May they have your wisdom in all that they do, continue to protect all of our first responders and city workers, God, and continue to bless this town. We pray this in the name of your Son. Amen. Please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May be seated. Mr. Mayor, if I can also give you the information that I received earlier for the funeral. Officer Fuller service details, there'll be a public viewing on Friday at Parkway from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., a prayer service at 7:00. There will be a viewing at Century Baptist on North Washington Saturday from 10:00 to 11:00 a.m., and then there will be a funeral service at that church at 11:00 a.m. with a procession to St. Mary's Cemetery following the funeral.
Thank you, Chaplain.
Thank you. God bless.
All right, if we can call our meeting in order by call and roll, please.
Commissioner Risch?
Here.
Commissioner Zinkler?
Here.
Commissioner Conley?
Here.
Commissioner Cleary?
Here.
Mayor Schmitz?
Here. At this point in time, it's time for public comment. Public comment is restricted to items on the consent agenda or any item on the regular agenda that is not a public hearing. Anyone who wish to speak, please come forward, sign in, and state your name and what you're talking about. A second call for a public comment. A third and final call for public comment. Hearing and seeing no public comment, public comment period is now closed. Commissioners, what are your wishes with regard to the consent agenda? Commissioner Risch?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove item E1 off the consent agenda.
For further discussion?
No, actually, I want to move it back. It has to do with the parking lot at the airport. I'm concerned about the price, and Mr. Hough and I will work together to try and figure that out.
So, complete removal?
Complete removal.
Okay. Commissioner Conley, you had mentioned you might have something?
Yeah, I would like to move, remove K1 for further discussion, and then I would move to approve the rest of the consent agenda unless somebody else has something.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second, a discussion of that motion. Hearing and roll.
Commissioner Zinkler?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Commissioner Cleary?
Yes.
Commissioner Risch?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley, your request on K1.
It's in relation to the increasing the shop rate from 95 to 110, and it was listed under emergency moves because we haven't been able to fill positions. And this was a discussion, the first time I ran, sat down with Director in that department, and that was in 2020, and the rate was 78. And it was a good discussion. At the same time, it was the expectation of raising thing was rather direct. And then also in the notes, it was mentioning that the state is much higher. They've raised those rates, and I've already experienced in the private sector to where areas competing with each other, to where everything's matriculating up, to where an area takes employees from one area, and then all of a sudden the rate goes up and they take back. And it doesn't necessarily get to the answer that everybody's looking from. We've only had the rate of 95 for a year. Now, I did call around. Regular vehicle shop rate is 150. Mid-equipment in the private sector is 160 an hour, and 190 an hour is the average that I found for heavy equipment. So, the private sector is paying significantly more. I don't know if we gain, like I said, what we're looking for, and I just wanted to bring that to light is research that information and things, and why I didn't want to vote on it and the consent agenda, but wanted to mention those topics now.
Commissioner Cleary?
Yeah, sure, I can elaborate a little bit, too, if you want to. I know that you were a part of some of the HR discussions, but because it fleet falls under my public works portfolios, I've had conversations with Steve and with Kurt about it. Just a further explanation as to why the rate increase is necessary when we're doing these salary proposals. And if either of those guys, if you want to hear from them, too, they can explain it probably better than I can, but we similar to SenCom, these fleet mechanic roles have been open, they remain open. It's hard to hire them, the rates that they get paid in the private sector and doing similar jobs are way higher. And the turnover and vacancy and that stuff has been an issue for a while. But because fleet operates as an enterprise fund, with the increase in salary, the increase in the shop rate has to have some balance as a way to be able to afford those salary increases is kind of like the basic way that I understand it. I guess if you want Steve to elaborate on anything, I think he certainly would, but it's just honestly been we've been dealing with a lot of like vacancy issues and not being able to fill the positions, and that's why it became a topic.
So, Commissioner Conley, I guess my question would be is, are you comfortable with where it's at? Are we addressing your question? Maybe that's a better way for me to put it, because the rate was adjusted based on cost of the inputs, the cost of staff.
Well, and I get that. When I talk to a lot of the entities and called people that I know in the field around, because that's not my field or whatnot, even with like the private entities and the rates being significantly higher, they're hurting for people, too. There's just not enough of that type of specialty out there. So, that's where I don't know, even if we raise to the 110, we're lower. Some of the things that we beat the private sector at is we have better insurances, we have vacation time. We have some things that we can do that the private sector doesn't do. So, the 95's only been there for a year, and I thought it was prudent because we represent the citizen to bring it up for discussion, so I know that we're working on things and asking the questions and stuff.
Commissioner Risch?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, is your concern we're not raising it high enough, or is it?
No, it's in my, I can only speak for myself. I mean, you all come to your conclusions where you come from, come to them at. And I asked for a list, and Steve was nice enough to where he actually provided me more information. He shared the shop rate all the way from 2010 through current, and in the last three years, it's been a steady uptick quicker than what it has been in the past, say, 15 years. This 95 rate has only been in there one year, so if we're not going to get the outcome that's desired, I'm not going to vote yes on it, so.
Commissioner Zinkler?
So, Mayor Commissioners, so I think you're focusing too much on the rate, Commissioner Conley. I think you got to focus on why the rate is increasing, because that's not an external charge to somebody to bring something to our shop to be fixed. That's an internal charge to other departments for them to pay what the new shop rate is. I think the bigger issue that we need to discuss is, yes, we can't we struggle, Kurt and his team struggle to find people, right? And I mean, my industry is the same way. What we have to look at is, if we do this here for them, what's the domino effect for other departments? I'll bring, my previous portfolio was the airport. They have maintenance staff, too. They struggle with that. So, my question would be is internally, did we have that discussion to change this rate for pay? I'm not so much concerned about the cost of the rate, the 110, 95, whatever it is. I mean, that's just trying to recoup the expenses for Kurt and his team to provide that service to whichever department that goes to. But my biggest concern is the domino effect of doing this, right? And I get, and I completely understand why you do it. I mean, there are times where businesses within my industry just throw money at, to hire people, too, and kind of increases the rate based, not based strictly on experience, just to get people, bodies, you know, manpower. So, that would, that's my concern with this.
So, I think that's a fair question, Commissioner.
Right, and I'd like to hear from whoever.
So, Steve and/or LeAnn can come up and address that, because they did have this discussion. I don't, I don't see anybody running to the microphone. But it's a fair question, and so that you hear the evaluation was done. Go ahead, LeAnn.
Yeah, good evening. So, I'll probably look for Steve to add some information to it. So, like the SenCom situation, we are looking at problem areas, and we have a situation. We have a small fleet of mechanics that support a huge fleet of specialized equipment. We did talk about the fact that we have another department that have mechanics, a slightly different grade, slightly different role, similar but not exactly the same. We did talk to our consultant that we use, Steve Condry, or the Condry and Associates, to say, you know, can you do an individual market assessment? What we, and I've had other requests in the time I've been with the city, and I don't it's not a good idea to piecemeal and take all of one department's directors and another, and pretty soon we've got all of these things happening singly instead of together. So, we need to look at doing a study. We, last time we did a study for classification and market was in '21, so I'm going to push to try to get something done in '26. But if we're going to do something in '26, we got to have money to be able to implement something. So, we did have that conversation. And so, we looked internally, because we're competing with other entities. And of course, we're not trying to be the top payer, but we have to be at least in the ballpark. And we have struggled over the last 18 months or even more. We've been denied, we've had offers declined flatly because of salary. And in order for us to be able to increase the salary that we would be paying to somebody coming in for the open position or positions, we have to be able to increase the salaries for the current employees. So, with that being said, you know, we've looked at problem areas, starting with SenCom. We're looking at these, if there were others we had initially thought might be included. At this point, some of them have worked out, but salary administration's an ongoing thing. I've got some other things I'm going to come to you, ask, and ask for to add to our toolbox. So, in terms of the data, I'm probably going to defer to Steve, because he spent more time putting that together. So, I don't know if I answered your question.
It leads into Steve, and I don't, Commissioner?
Also, I'll expand on that, and I'll be honest, I don't know if I want to see another study for for pay, because we've gone through, I've gone through a couple of those, and unfortunately, it comes time to make those decisions to do it, and we choose not to do it at this table a couple of times, so right now, put that on the back burner, if you could. But, so that drives me to the next, my next point is that the new generation doesn't really care about benefits as much as the generate, our generation. I'm not the younger guy, right? So, I'll use the example of my 20-year-old child. He doesn't, he doesn't really care what his benefits are. He wants to see what's, what's coming on his check, right? So, at some point in time, I think we have to make some type of adjustment. You know, we have, we have some very, very dedicated employees who have been here for many, many years, and they appreciate the benefits package. We may have to adjust somehow, some way. I don't know which way that is. That's your job, because you're the HR person. You're welcome.
Thank you.
That we have to, we have to tailor what we have to the, to the next generation of whoever they are. In this case, we're talking about mechanics, right? That we may have to give them more money, but back off somehow their healthcare package or their benefit package, because they, they focus heavily on, and I don't, again, I'll be, I don't know how we work it out. They focus more on what's on their check going home, so they can make their house payments and their truck payments and their boat payments or whatever payments they want to make, right? So, we can't, we have the golden carrot, so to speak, with this wonderful benefits package, but we don't retain anybody, because our benefits package is much, much better than any private sector company that's out there. The only one we compete against, in my opinion, is the state. That's it. So, if we're, we're not losing them because we offer a great healthcare package or benefit package, we're losing them at the end of the day because of the bottom dollar, you know, what's on their check. So, we have, that's, that's the dynamic that we have to have, and those are, that's the heavy discussion we have to have first before we go to a study, because we can't, we can't do everything. It's not, what we do in one department isn't the same that happens in the other department. It's not equal across the board. It's not, it's flat. It's not. So, it's my two cents.
I, I don't necessarily disagree with you, Commissioner. I think there will have, there will come a day when, and that may be sooner than later, that that has to be looked at, you know? We know the state has made a move and what they're doing, too, so. But to respond to the critical need positions that Steve has or in his departments that are existing, and Steve can give you some of the background information as to where the compensation-related portion goes, if we still have questions around that?
Good evening, Commissioners. Just a, kind of a follow-up to Commissioner Zinkler's comment. Yes, we do compete with the state pretty directly. We also compete with the mines and the power plants, and some of their benefits are equally, if not more generous than some of those that we offer. And we did lose a, our most recent mechanic to one of the plants. And we typically don't bring that up, because we don't even get close to matching with their salaries. We don't even try, because we know we can't. And so, you know, this kind of started back in '22 with a, the resignation of one of the mechanics. We had posted, it took us about four months. We went through 12 different candidates, and we got one individual, we had made a couple of different offers. We got one individual to accept. So, then back in August of '23, we had a retirement. And that position, we opened up four different times. We had, excuse me, brought in 15 different candidates. We had made six different offers before we finally got one individual to accept. And that was back in July of this year that we finally got someone to accept. Three weeks later, we lost the one that we previously had hired, and we started the process all over again. And the comments that we keep getting from the individuals is, the latest one was, why, you can't expect me to work for that salary, not with all my experience. And so, that's, that's kind of what we're dealing with. And so, we've been having these discussions for quite some time with LeAnn administration, and at this point, we just decided, okay, it's time to bring it forward to see if we can kind of address it a little bit.
Questions? Go ahead, Commissioner Risch.
Mr. Mayor, Steve, now, do you start offering, do you offer some of these people at the top of the salary range? You have a range you can work with, correct?
Mayor, Commissioner Risch, we, yes, we do have a range, but the dictating factor is we can only go up as high as the most recent one that we brought in, because if we start leapfrogging that individual, we're going to start losing those as well, because, so we can only go up as high as our lowest paid. And there's not a lot of difference between some of them. And so, what we're trying to do is bring the bottom up, which will allow us to bring, increase the offer a little bit. So, yes, we do have a range, but we can only go so far within that range, because we're limited by the salaries that we're paying on other individuals.
Commissioner Conley?
Why not bring this topic when, like Commissioner Zinkler mentioned, that we have several departments, and all of them are going to have requests? Why not bring this specific request up during that budget cycle where this is coming in right before we start that process? When now we move this, and everybody else is going to be measured differently, and they might have their own needs as well? Why have it offset like that?
Mayor, Commissioner Conley, yeah, we are just starting the budget process, and we'll work through a draft budget here in early, early summer. We'll adopt the final budget late fall, and then we will adopt it. It'll go into effect January 1 of '26, which means I will have this position probably open for another year before we address that. We didn't know if we could wait another year to address that and put something into place, so that's why we brought it forward now.
Okay, is it just one position, or is there more positions?
Currently, it's just one, but it's been no, it's just one, but it's been open for almost 18 months straight. It's been multiple people within the timeframe.
There's been a vacancy for?
There's been a vacancy for 18 months. And in the fleet, the positions with the shop rate is what brings the revenue. So, you, even though we're only down one mechanic, the revenues are down accordingly to balance the books for, for fleet as well.
Commissioner Conley?
Why aren't we offering, since there's a lot of position, it seemed to be, positions seem to be open, like Career Academy right now. I know former Commissioner, where his employer is offering, we will pay for the education if you and you'll get to work for us on an hourly wage for a said number of time. That particular program's three years. And I know it's a lot of talk amongst the high schoolers, because my son's in that class right now. Since there's so much competition, because we don't have enough people to fill those positions, why aren't we looking into something like that, much like the private sector people are?
Mayor, Commissioner Conley, right now, I don't know that we have the policy in place to actually do that, but you're absolutely correct. A lot of the students that are going into the mechanic field, the technician field, they have scholarships from the RDOs, the butlers. They are there tuition-free as long as they come in, come and work for them after the fact. And so, they're already working with the colleges. So, the, the new grads for us to capture are not out there either. And so, industry is doing other thing, other incentives. Right now, we don't have that tool in our toolbox to be able to do that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cleary?
Just to add a little bit to what Steve said, too, as far as like the timeline. I mean, the positions have been open for a while. It wasn't something that wasn't discussed at budget. We were talking 2025, when we were going over salary increases across the board. We knew that there were going to be ones that were going to be more critical and still have issues. And I think at the time, last summer, it was discussed that areas like SenCom and mechanics were going to we kind of tasked those directors to go back to the table and tell us like what was actually needed and how we could attempt to solve that problem, and that's why the SenCom one came individually. That's why this one is coming to us individually. It's not like it's just happening. It was, it was a conversation then as well. I feel like it just, we wanted them to, because they are specific issues, and they the retention has been trickier than some other departments, that we wanted to kind of address them individually, and I feel like that's how we got here. But I agree with Steve, it's hard to wait for the 2026 budget, because then we're not implementing those until a year from now. So, more than likely, that position sits open if we don't change anything, so.
And I specifically challenged the administration to work with those departments to find creative methods to be able to secure the employees we need in these critical positions. And that doesn't mean these are the only ones, but, and we're, we're a big enterprise, and there are going to probably be others, and there's always, there's always the risk of a ripple effect. We have to understand that, but I think the ripple effect of a study is bigger, potentially. And so, I've expressed my concerns on that as well. So, Commissioner Conley?
And I appreciate that discussion. This is why we like the representative process and things. For anybody that, where it's not their portfolio on these topics when they come up, we get the information on Wednesday, and we have to adjust as quick as we can to gain the information. And that, it's not enough time for me to mull over this, because I do like to search for those creative ideas, too. If, I always continue to work on things, even regardless of how decisions are made, and that if further discussions come up during the budget process, that's when I would address it. I'm just not going to vote for it tonight.
Commissioners, what are your wishes with regard to this request?
I'm going to move to approve K1 as presented.
I'll second.
Do we have further discussion? Commissioner Zinkler?
I'll just reiterate that I do have a concern that we're leaving, even though they might be classified different, I think we're leaving some important airport employees out of this scenario, so. That's it.
And duly noted. Any other discussion? If not, we'll call roll.
Commissioner Conley?
No.
Commissioner Cleary?
Yes.
Commissioner Risch?
Yes.
Commissioner Zinkler?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. Thank you for the discussion. Now we'll move to our regular agenda. Find my spot. So the first item is a public hearing on ordinance 6589 to amend the thresholds related to emergency procurement thresholds. And I, Dmitri, are you, are you able to give a presentation on this briefly?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. There's just been a lot of language from a long time ago that has not been changed in our, in our ordinances. And speaking with various departments, we've decided that as a group of department directors, we decided there are some changes that need to be made to our emergency procurement policy to allow for certain flexibility during, during the moments of emergency, of floods or whatnot. And so we felt that we need to maybe tweak a couple of, a couple of items, a couple of words in the, in the language to make it more appealing to, or more easier to process during the times of need and not having to perform certain procurement procedures that you can't really perform during an emergency. And so we modified the language slightly to, to remove, to change some of the language to make it more palatable during those times of need. We do have one slight adjustment on the language that was put in there so for the public hearing. So I would like to.
Michelle, do you have that available by any chance?
Mayor and Commissioners, in the memo that's presented on item number A. So it's basically you have your main ordinance and then you have the second page there on A. It's to remove the, the three words obtain quotes and. And that would basically allow the director of Public Works is authorized to hire the necessary contractors to repair the damage and reestablish the utility services. And so it would be removing obtain quotes and.
Removing those three words.
Those three words.
Okay. Yep. Thank you, Michelle. All right. So with, so the public knows that. And this is a public hearing, so is there any questions? Commissioners first. We'll open the public hearing. Anyone who wished to speak this ordinance, please come forward. A second call for public comment? A third and final call for public comment? Hearing and seeing no further public comment, public comment period is now closed. Commissioners.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented with the changes that Michelle brought forward.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Mike, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, my only concern is an A word. We raised it from $200,000 up to $500,000 for an emergency repair. And then the administrator will notify the mayor and the commissioner holding the portfolio. Maybe the mayor should have to sign off on this at least, or not just notify him.
Dmitri, can you respond to that?
Absolutely. Mayor Commissioners, Commissioner Risch, our only concern is during times of emergency is that we may not have the mayor available and, or the commissioners or maybe sometimes even the administrator, depending on the situation. Luckily, you know, we, obviously there's five of you and, and there's the administrator and the assistant city administrator. But we want to be able to give as much latitude during those times of emergency as possible. And I felt what we've had, obviously we had COVID. So we recently, so we've got to experience what that's like and what we faced during those times. And obviously there was the flood in 2011. So we, we kind of pulled our heads together and realized that there are some things that we probably should have some more flexibility on. And it's not like we wouldn't bring this back to the city commission anyway. I think if you're spending over $500,000, I mean, there's going to be some accountability anyway. It just might be retroactive or an indifferent, provided in a different way, maybe.
Ratification.
Yeah, yeah.
Commissioner Zinker.
Mayor Commissioners, and I think it's more, more important than in those types of situations, we're efficient. Instead of trying to get three commissioners to come together to approve something that's an emergency, right? It's, we got to be, let, let our team be proactive, get it done. And then we can, as you said, Mayor, ratify the scenario, so.
And we've hired, I feel we've hired competent directors to know when the time is to pull the lever appropriately. So that's just my own opinion, so. Any other discussion?
I'm okay, I'm going to support it. But under that line of logic, we could raise it to $10 million.
Not sure, not sure we. If there's no further discussion, we'll call roll.
Commissioner Cleary?
Yes.
Commissioner Risch?
Yes.
Commissioner Zinker?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. Next item B, consider receiving bids and awarding the contract for highway construction project HC 165. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. If I could get the share link up? Mayor Commissioners, HC 165 is our East Century Avenue reconstruction project from about Centennial Road to Cost Drive and then the extension of East Century Avenue from Cost Drive to 52nd Street. And then the construction of 52nd Street from Gold Drive down to this extension of Century. We opened bids on last Thursday and we had six bidders all really, really tight in their bidding. The low bid is with Knife River, Central North Dakota Division with a bid of $12,639,182.69. So that will be the recommendation is to award to Knife River. I do want to note a couple of things on the project budget as well. So one of the consented agenda items today was the right-of-way eneasements for this project and as well as the utility relocation agreements. So those are line items that would be included in this project as other contracts, land purchases, et cetera, as well as our wetland mitigation and our engineering costs. Want to bring to the attention the funding for this project. Most of this will come from the half-cent sales tax. We have a $2 million grant from the North Dakota Department of Transportation that state funds only. When we've looked at the costs to construct 52nd Street as well as purchase the right-of-way for 52nd Street, that came in somewhere around $1.7 million. So the state funding of flexible transportation funds would be entirely allocated towards 52nd Street with then the remainder being applied to the half-cent sales tax eligible items. We put the penny sales tax on there because we were prepared, if we would have had higher bids, to have to allocate and assign dollars from the 1% sales tax to this. But in this instance, because of the very competitive bids that we received, that was unnecessary. We also show the water utility fund paying for any of the water main improvements as part of this project as well. So with that, I take any questions that you would have?
Commissioner Conley.
Not a question, just to thank you. Voters passed the measure in 2018 and it's a good clarification with all of the multiple sources that go into these large projects is that we have it on record that we're being very intentional and diligent with the permissions we've been given with each funding source. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioners?
Move to approve as presented.
Any further discussion? Hearing done, we'll call roll.
Mr. Risch?
Yes.
Mr. Zinker?
Yes.
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Cleary?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. Item C, consider request, receive an update on the industrial pretreatment program ordinance revisions. Michelle.
Mayor and Commissioners, we're going through a process of updating our Title 11.1 Industrial Pretreatment Ordinance. And I just wanted to give you kind of a high level. The next few meetings is when we're going to be actually presenting the ordinance and going through meetings. And then we, this is a process that is also, this ordinance gets reviewed by our North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality. So they basically have to make sure that the ordinance meets the EPA's federal regulations. And there's two pieces that we're trying to combine in this ordinance. In 2005, there was a Streamlining Act that EPA put through that we're having to incorporate into the ordinance. And then we had our local limits that we approved in May that we're pulling into the ordinance. What we're going to be doing is setting up a public meeting in, setting up a public meeting, let me just look, on the 29th of January. And we'll do a stakeholder meeting at Public Works. So what we're planning on doing today is the 14th. The 28th, what we're trying to do is have a presentation with that ordinance to the city commission. The next day at, from 3 o'clock to 4:30, we'd have kind of open house to be able to inform anybody in the public that's interested, answer any kind of questions. We'll also have a form on our website, which will ask a few questions if people are interested in providing comments. That type of form, when we're dealing with the industrial pretreatment program, we're basically talking about industrial waste that are discharged from businesses into the sanitary sewer that come down to the wastewater treatment plant. And the whole point of the industrial pretreatment program is working with our businesses to protect that infrastructure, protect that wastewater infrastructure. So on the survey, some of the questions we'd be asking is if they're familiar with the industrial pretreatment program, which helps protect the biological treatment process of the wastewater treatment plant, a simple yes or no. Asking what type of business activities are you engaged in, what they can provide information of what they're engaged with. And then ask a question, does your business activity discharge any of the following into the wastewater system? So is it purely domestic waste, which means only like toilets and shower water? Or is it fat soils and grease, sand and grit, chemicals or anything other? And those are kind of the things that we're more trying to watch for what's released into the sanitary sewer. So typical retail type activity really doesn't add any type of more business or industrial type waste to the wastewater system. The next question we'll be asking if they reviewed the new title, 11.1, which incorporates that local limits that we passed in May of 2025 for. And we'll have a link there so that there will be a chance to be able to review what's that information is. And that's a simple yes or no. And then we have a box for being able to provide any comments that they have, that they want to provide. And then if they want to provide some contact information, we can do follow-up with their information. It helps us know what kind of business they're in, so we kind of know how to gear some of the questions or responses to those questions. But just wanted to let you know, we're kind of pulling all this together. We plan to put it together, a public information release tomorrow after this meeting to let, to let our residents know that we provided this update, that we'll have meeting opportunities and that the information's available on our website. We'll have one link for our website and that information will be updated through this whole process. And then any comments that we receive, we can see if there's actually things that we can or are able to adjust within our ordinance. But we're really interested if there is some comments there to try and see what we can incorporate.
Any questions? Commissioners, Zinker.
Mayor Commissioners, I just want to expand on what Michelle said a little bit. I mean, we just, the biggest thing here is that we just need to be in compliance with the EPA. We just don't want to put, get things into our sanitary system and then into our treatment plant. And then they come along and do a test and they find it and we don't know that it's in there. We find it sporadically during testing and then puts us in a precarious situation. To make sure that we don't become, you know, we don't have a, we don't need Big Brother looking over the top of us. That's, that's basically what's going to, what's going to happen here if we don't apply by these. So it's not to dive into your private business or anything like that. It's just more of a, of us helping them or the other businesses within the city to make sure that we're not impeding or putting our sewer system in a negative situation.
Exactly. And Mayor, I should introduce Paul, Paul Olson. He's our industrial pretreatment manager. And so Paul is actually the one working with each of the businesses. And the businesses we're working with know his face. You know, they know him, they have his contact information. He's out in the community all the time. So this public meeting too, we'll be inviting those significant industrial users. But it's also a good way, Paul's able to help them save a lot of headaches too. And so we're, we're here to, to be a good resource for our businesses.
Thank you. Commissioner Risch.
I've just got one question, Mr. Mayor. Do we require sand and oil interceptors in the various shops around town?
Yes.
I'll answer that for you. That's because it's, it's, that's plumbing code.
Yep.
Right? So that's not just what we need to do for, for our sanitary system, but that's, that's North Dakota State Plumbing Code. Yeah, and you can have a condo system where you have five or six condo shops together and just have one sand oil interceptor. That's not a big deal, yeah.
We just need them cleaned out periodically. So the ordinance, it's in their best interest to clean them up periodically and it's in our best interest. So a lot of these things help us prevent backups and prevent other things that would cause worse damage. So we're, we're trying to be a resource.
And it's good that we talked about it today, one, so we can start to get the public awareness of this topic. And thank you for making sure we get the public notice, notices out.
Thank you.
All right. Item D, consider request, receive legislative update and provide direction to staff. That's you, Jason.
Evening, Mayor and Commissioners. As you're all well aware, the legislature kicked off last week Tuesday and it's been a sprint already. Been up there a couple of different times, have not testified because I have not had an opportunity to get any direction or feedback from you. And so that's the primary goal here today. Prior to tonight's meeting, I put at your workstations a few pages with a variety of both House and Senate bills, a brief summary of each of the bill. And then because our partner organization, the North Dakota League of Cities, is in many ways a tremendous resource for municipalities, I listed their position on the various bills. Some of these things do directly relate to legislative priorities within the city. But then there are maybe broader statewide issues that the league is of course looking at because they do represent 355 municipalities in the state of North Dakota. I trust you haven't had a chance to run through the full list yet since I just put it in front of you. And I, I will admit, I'm continuing to add bills to this day after day. The deadline for House introductions for bills, I believe, is January 20th. And then the Senate deadline would be the 28th. So at that point, then we should see the largest volume of bills at least introduced to that point. There are other like House concurrent resolutions and other things that could be introduced after that. But those are some pretty significant dates for us to at least know what we are tracking and what we are monitoring going through. If it's all right with you, I'll just maybe touch on some of the more important ones that are on the list. And then we'll really focus on House Bill 1176. That's the property tax bill that has gotten quite a bit of attention already in a hearing this morning with the Finance and Taxation Committee in the House. So I'll just kind of briefly go through them. And then if there's any you'd like to go back and discuss or direct a position on, I would appreciate that. Just starting at the top, House Bill 1020. This is the bill that provides comprehensive appropriation for the North Dakota Department of Water Resources. In short, this is also the bill that we as Bismarck are very interested in because it would contain funding for the South Bismarck Flood Control Project. So City Engineer Gabe Shell has been working with Representative Nathi. I believe this bill is introduced tomorrow in front of committee. And then of course, we will track that as it goes all the way through. House Bill 1028, not necessarily one we need to take a position on, but certainly one that could have an impact on how we go forward with construction manager at-risk projects. Not a lot of details on that one just yet. I don't believe it's seen any committee hearings, but I will continue to keep an eye on that one. Obviously, the league has an interest in this for a number of reasons, for different cities and municipalities throughout the state. House Bill 1032, the league's position on this is supportive. This is a new legal framework for municipal court. And at the onset of our meeting, that's the conversation you heard inadvertently. Attorney Mies and I were talking, I was, I had inquired with her if the people in her cohort, the legal team throughout the state are monitoring this. And absolutely, the league has indicated a position of support. The bill would allow cities to create municipal courts as part of the state's unified judicial system. There are some cities in North Dakota where there's less than 5,000 residents where you don't even need to be an attorney to be a judge. And so that may cause some concern for smaller towns. Obviously not an issue here in Bismarck, but still something that is worth keeping an eye on just to make sure that we understand what any implications or changes could be. House Bill 1106, this one, myself and Community Development Director Arith found ourselves in front of a committee last week purely to listen. But then I should note, Ben did an outstanding job. He was called up without any prepared testimony. And he answered questions for about 25 minutes in front of the committee. And it was purely without preparation. But because of his experience as an MPO employee, a transit board member and the community development director, he was aces. And so we're interested in this one because the bill is written very broadly. And so we're interested in this one because the bill is written very broadly, but it effectively puts a two million dollar note in the Department of Transportation's budget to be used for transit systems. And that's about as broad as it was. And so the sponsor of the bill, Representative Munson from Osnebrooke, indicated he intentionally left it broad with the hopes that the committee would work out the details. So more information to share going forward there. Certainly, they've got a lot of, a lot of work to do before they decide just to appropriate two million dollars. And it, I should note, it was just a one-time allocation. So. House Bill eleven forty-one, you'll note here, the League of Cities has strong opposition. Essentially, what this bill would do, it would amend the North Dakota law regarding the use of public services and property for political purposes by establishing more comprehensive guidelines and enforcement mechanisms. The bill prohibits state or political subdivision entities from using public funds to support or endorse private organizations that have previously endorsed candidates or ballot measures within the last ten years. I believe the league's opposition to this is it could render them much less effective than they are today because we as a municipality are a member of their organization and we rely on them very much for communication and in some cases lobbying for various municipal bills. I have not seen this one hit the floor just yet. House Bill eleven seventy-six, that's the one that I alluded to earlier. That's the property tax and changes to the legacy fund. I won't touch on the legacy fund, the homestead credits. Those are certainly very important things, but I do want to note, I also included a little bit of a cover sheet that was passed out at the committee hearing this morning. This was a summary by Representative Mike Nathie from District Thirty here in Bismarck talking about primary residence credit, homestead credit program, property tax classifications, and levy limits, in addition to property tax relief funding and property tax notices and statements. For this discussion at our level, the levy limits is the one that's gotten the most attention from municipalities within the state. As you probably heard the governor's address last week Tuesday, and it was reiterated with this proposal that the state is proposing a three percent cap on municipal budgets annually. The League of Cities coordinated a meeting with the twelve largest cities. Of course, Bismarck is part of that. Myself and Assistant Administrator Wiles and Finance Director Cherniak participated in that discussion along with representation from Dickinson, Fargo, West Fargo, Mandan, Jamestown, Grand Forks, and a few other cities yesterday. And general consensus on that, we all understand there is a desire for property tax reform and relief. We heard that loud and clear. Measure Four spoke to that quite clearly. And with the results of the election in November, I think many of us realize that there will be a change. And we're content and glad to work on what that change might look like. But the general consensus here is that a three percent cap could be pretty crippling for most municipalities. One example that was shared by Matt Gardner this morning during testimony at the hearing, a three percent adjustment for the town of Anamos would be eight hundred dollars a year. Not much as far as a budget increase. Now, realize we are not Anamos, but a three percent cap, for one scenario, you all know we've been talking about new fire stations in the community, particularly one in the northeast area. Thanks to the recent sales tax passage at the November ballot, we have a tool to help pay for the construction of that facility. That is outstanding. A three percent cap would likely render us unable to hire the fifteen firefighters necessary to staff that building. That doesn't speak to any of the other staff or any of the other expenses within the organization for that year. It would basically cover just the salaries and benefits for a portion of the team we would need to staff the fire station. And so with that information in mind, a consensus was formed by, through the discussions yesterday with other large city leaders and North Dakota League of Cities staff. What Matt Gardner was proposing today was a, we understand the need for a cap, but let's also talk about some sort of a benchmark like a consumer price index plus a certain percentage. And what we had proposed was a CPI index plus two percent, and that allows for a little fluctuation from year to year. That remark was shared with the committee members, and some felt that that really wasn't in the spirit of property tax reform, but then others suggested the, maybe the consumer price index isn't the right measure for the state of North Dakota because we are a commodities-driven economy. There may be a better formula that the Bank of North Dakota could help establish or provide to recognize that we aren't the same as all other forty-nine states in the nation. Mayor Smith had shared with me, the CPI over the last hundred and ten years on average is just over three point two five percent.
About three point three percent.
Three point three percent. So, and that's a hundred and ten-year average. Obviously, in the last five years, we've had very significant changes through supply chain issues, you know, labor rates. You all know the, the story there. And so.
Go ahead, Commissioner. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, Jason, the three percent cap, does that apply just to increase property values, mill levy increases, or special assessments?
The tax dollars on previously taxed.
So if we had a hundred million dollars for revenue, we could only go to a hundred and three?
Yep.
From all sources?
No.
Not, not, not special assessments?
Just from, this is not special assessments. This is your property taxes. It's just on the previously existing property that hasn't been, had any improvements added to it or developed.
Yep.
Which, I mean, I'm not, some form of cap is, is going to happen.
Sure.
Has to. Yes, Commissioner Conley. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to ignore you.
Well, the governor, when he talked about it and things, I was there that day, Jason and I greeted each other. The plan, his plan is, he rolled out, doesn't work without a cap very well, or some form of measure. And when I was thinking about it, I was, there's this argument every year, or we have several citizens come up during the Board of Equalization process or time, and we say, well, we didn't raise our mill rate, but valuations go up for some of the people and they see a tax increase. And it's always a hard conversation. So if it's not a three percent, maybe the legislature can look at a valuation freeze or of some sort, or it could be where, unless both parties benefit, at refinance or sale, something along those lines. That would actually embolden our process a little bit more as a republic where it's at representation. Because then all budgetary decisions would come in front of the government subs if there's an increase. And so if there wasn't a cap discussion, he, the governor in his speech took valuation discussion off the table, but that's an example of what we could look at as far as bringing it back if a cap wasn't the discussion. Because it's those increases that happen with or without people at a table making a decision, that really frustrates a lot of our citizens.
Mayor Commissioners, the, I guess to just kind of close on eleven seventy-six, there was testimony on both sides and some neutral testimony, which is always interesting. But I believe where the message was left, at least from Matt Gardner with North Dakota League of Cities, is that we aren't opposed to some type of cap and we aren't opposed to reform, but please allow us to be at the table and help with this solution. We have a lot of information as an organization, as, as you all know, that I believe would help inform some of these very important decisions going forward. And I realize the legislature meets every two years and they may not get it exactly right this time, but I don't know that waiting two years to see the effects of that, I'm a little concerned at what that might look like. We just got done having a conversation about how competitive it is in the employment market and how we struggle to retain talented employees. If we're not able to, if we're not able to recognize just the cost of living adjustments in this community, we are really going to struggle at that point. And so the, as I mentioned, this bill was first heard this morning. We've got a long time to go before crossover. There are somewhere between forty and fifty-five bills addressing property tax that are out there in some way, shape, or form. I will do my best to keep up with all of them, but for right now, this seems to be, House Bill eleven seventy-six is the one that has the brightest light shining upon it today. So if there aren't any other questions with that, I'd be happy to keep going with the list. House Bill eleven ninety-three, this one's somewhat new. It would appropriate over eight million dollars that would be identified for Peace Officer and Correctional Officer Appreciation Grant Program between the two thousand and twenty-five and two thousand and twenty-seven biennium. Again, here is some creative ways to attract and retain talent in throughout law enforcement and corrections. House Bill eleven ninety-five, this bill proposes to increase the fee for violating school bus safety laws from one hundred to five hundred. That falls under our category of transportation. There's a couple of bills in here that are addressing driving under the influence, careless driving. The next one, House Bill twelve oh six, would amend sections of state law relating to driving under the influence. You can see at the end of that summary, the fines go up, the offenses get a little more steep for multiple charges as they go forward. These last two, I have not had a chance to communicate with Police Chief Dave Dravich, but I know the Police Chiefs Association is very much interested in these, and I trust that they will do a great job to take a position and represent the best interests as well. But I do want to bring these to our attention here. Senate Bill two thousand and twelve, it's the first one on the Senate side. This is the budget for the Department of Transportation. Obviously, we benefit from the funds that the DOT distributes throughout regions, and so that would be one that we have an interest in. Much like Senate Bill two thousand and eighteen, this would be the budget for the Commerce Senate Bill two thousand and twenty-seven, this is a comprehensive framework for floodplain management across counties, cities, and townships. I haven't seen all the details on this one yet, but obviously, when we're talking about floodplain management, that is something that is very near and dear to the staff at the Community Development Department, working with FEMA and those categories, so we will keep an eye on that one. Senate Bill two thousand and thirty, this bill would appropriate funds to address homelessness in North Dakota through several key provisions. That one kind of ties in with Senate Bill two thousand and ninety-six, which is jumping ahead one on your list. That would allocate five million dollars from the State General Fund for renovations at the state hospital. But then, more importantly, the second portion of Senate Bill two thousand and ninety-six would appropriate a hundred million dollars to establish four regional acute psychiatric treatment service regions, giving the department flexibility to either construct twenty-four-bed treatment facilities in each region or contract with private entities. As you've heard from Renee Mock, our Public Health Director, homelessness, behavioral health, mental health, they are very much tied together. I believe this is a really nice attempt at the state's efforts here to try and regionalize some of these care facilities. And as I've heard it explained, if you can seek care in a place that's closer to your home and closer to your support system, you're more likely to have success upon your departure from there.
Commissioner Rish, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, Jason, I think I was reading an article just the other day, there's a proposal for three hundred million dollars to rebuild the state hospital, and this is like the alternative plan? Is that correct?
Correct. That's my understanding too, Commissioner Rish, that there's kind of competing thoughts on how to address this and regionalizing versus centralizing, I think, is maybe the bigger discussion there. And then finally, for your list and consideration tonight is another bill, and I actually did have a conversation with the Police Chief and also Public Works Service Operations Director Solway on this one. The bill would amend North Dakota's driving law, careless driving law, to provide more specific guidelines and penalties for drivers who operate vehicles without reasonable care, particularly relating to snow removal equipment. You've got a driver that's passing a snowplow, loses control, takes out the snowplow, that will impede our operations as well. And so this stiffens the fines and increases the awareness for careless driving, so we've got more people being mindful. Obviously, the DOT would be very interested in this as well with the work that they're doing statewide. So if you have any specific questions or direction for me, I left the Bismarck position open, the third column in the, in the sheet here. If you're content to align with the North Dakota League of Cities on these, I'm, I'm prepared to testify as necessary in the right categories, but if you have other specific directions or ideas for me, I'm more than happy to try and help. And if you have specific thoughts or suggestions for House Bill eleven seventy-six, I think that's the top one at the list right now.
I think, right now, we've gotten a bunch of information out of League of Cities and there's discussions at least being had. We know there's going to be a cap. It's, you know, to get as much flexibility as we can get without causing any harm, I think is, you know, the bill itself has got a lot of positive merits to it. I would love to see it committed to be funded for the next ten years, but that's on the legislature, it's not on us. So I think the rest of the leagues, I don't know, Commissioners, are you kind of okay, in alignment with the rest of the league?
I'm good with that.
Okay. Anything else?
It's really, I mean.
Go ahead.
Mayor Commissioners, we've got to remember too, right? We're only four or five days into this thing.
Yep.
And this thing, I mean, it can change at any time. And, and I like the jest a little bit with the local legislators. When the, when the senators and the reps don't get to get along, they could change their bills when at crossover time. So, I mean, I don't think, it's not, don't, let's not hit the panic button just yet. Let's absorb and, and see what happens.
Just not to add more to your plate, Jason, but I know we're trying to like streamline and make sure that they're all like together and that we're all aware of them. Public health, we've talked a little bit about House Bill thirteen oh seven, which is, has to do with the smoke-free stuff, and it would kind of, the, the state law and our ordinance wouldn't necessarily jive well together, and we want to make sure that, that all the work that we put into Bismarck being smoke-free in those environments. So just another one to watch, I think, at this point.
Mayor Commissioners, I think if I recall that one, I just put my eyes on it this afternoon, I believe if the local law is more restrictive than state law, the state law would void the local law in that regard. So that one I did not see on the league's list of bills to watch, but that is certainly something that we would want to take a look at to make sure that we still do have some local say in, in these matters. So.
Okay. Any other comments for Jason? If not, thank you, Jason. Is there any other business for tonight? Commissioner Conley.
I had a conversation through email with Commissioner Cleary about a week and a half ago. The fees that came out for Public Works and the adjustment on the new garbage structure, we talked about, at this table, we talked about the, where somebody can request that a trailer come out for twenty dollars and pick up up to five items. And we did discuss, like if it's a mattress or a refrigerator, in that sense that there would be an additional fee for those particular items. When the actual brochure, the flyer came out, there were additional items that we didn't discuss at this table, and I was a little bit frustrated by that because if five of those items end up being, the five items that are picked up in that trip, all of a sudden, a twenty-dollar trip becomes a seventy-dollar trip. And if the expectation of the citizen is that they're only going to be paying twenty and it turns into seventy, I can foresee that being problematic for them. And we already know that citizens are pretty vocal. So I was frustrated to see that, and I know we already spent money printing flyers and things, but if you pick up an end table or you pick up a couch, then there's those additional fees. We never talked about those items. We only talked about the fridge and the mattress and such.
Commissioner Rish.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Conley, I thought it was really clear when we were discussing it, it would be twenty dollars plus whatever the associated fee was for each item. That's the way I remember it.
Go ahead, Commissioner Cleary.
Yeah, I think that if, if there was a misunderstanding, I mean, Steve and I went over the website before the website went live, and I think the website explains it really well. The twenty dollars is a service fee. It's a pilot program. We're going to see if people use it. We're going to see if, if it works. But then each item, you can, you can have up to five items, right, Steve? Up to five items picked up. And any item, because it's essentially only for bulky items, right? You're not going to call to have this service pick up something that would fit in your bin. So each big item has an associated fee that kind of coincides with the fee that you would pay at the landfill if you took it out there yourself. So the twenty dollars is for the service, the per item kind of associates to the landfill price. Yeah, I don't think Steve read us through the entire list of items that they would allow. There's items that they don't allow, too. Those are listed on the website as well. But just, yeah, to, to. to clarify, so to speak, with this conversation, it's not like a $20 fee, and you get to, and that covers the cost of the dumping of the items as well. It, the $20 is the service fee, and then you pay for each item individually. But when they call to request that service, I believe at Public Works, they'll have to identify what they're having collected because that's like an individual bill that gets charged to them. It's not something that's like on their utility bill. So it's not as if it should be a surprise to that individual after the fact, because they'll be telling the Public Works ahead of time, you know, I want the service. They'll get told what date it's happening on, because there's kind of a timeline for it to see, we're trying to see if it works to do it, you know, a certain day of the week that works best for the crews. And so they'll be told during that phone call, like, what their bill is based off of what items are being picked up. So hopefully, between the phone calls and how those conversations go and the way that the website's laid out, hopefully, it's clear, if it wasn't clear, the original discussion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other business? We stand adjourned.